Good evening and welcome to the Take two. Good evening and welcome to the City of Pleasant Hill City Council meeting for May 1, 2023. If you're able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. We have the roll call, please.
Noack?
Here.
Rin?
Here.
Chess?
Here.
Vincent?
Here.
Flaherty?
Here.
We'll move right along to number five. We had no closed session to report on five as presentations. Five point one, we have a proclamation designated May as Building Safety Month. I'm going to invite Jeff Simmons, the city's chief building official, to the podium. And I will share some words for a proclamation before I turn the microphone over to you, Jeff. Okay? So whereas the City of Pleasant Hill recognizes that our growth and strength depends on the safety and essential role that buildings and infrastructure play, both in everyday life and when disasters strike. Whereas our confidence in the buildings that constitute the built environment in our community is based on the devotion of our vigilant guardians such as Jeff. And whereas a guardian such as Jeff is a dedicated member of the International Code Council, a nonprofit that brings together local, state, territorial, tribal, and federal officials who create and implement the highest quality building codes to protect us where we live, learn, work, and play. Whereas each year, in observance of Building Safety Month, people all over the world are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety, resilience, and economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service of protecting lives and property that local and state building departments and officials such as Jeff Simmons, Fire Prevention Bureau, and federal agencies provide all of us. Now therefore, I, Timothy M. Flaherty, Mayor of the City of Pleasant Hill, on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby declare the month of May 2023 as Building Safety Month in the City of Pleasant Hill. And I encourage our citizens to join as we participate in Building Safety Month activities.
All right.
It's all yours, Jeff.
Well, I just want to thank you, Mayor, and the City Council for supporting us in building safety. You've been really wonderful. The city manager also has been awesome. And, you know, it's a great time to recognize Building Safety Month, all the work that building safety professionals do across not just Pleasant Hill, but across California and the country to make sure that buildings are safe, you know, when things happen. So with that, we're conducting our outreach for the Off the Grid on May 17th and 31st, where we will once again be handing out the safety vests for children and the fake hot hats. So we're on it. So thank you.
Excellent. Let me give you this proclamation.
I'm always on the picture behind you, so.
Moving along to item six, City Manager comments. Ms. Catalano?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had a very successful Warriors Watch Party last Wednesday at Off the Grid. It was the most well-attended Off the Grid that we've had since the last time we had a Warriors event. And we will keep an eye on how they do in the future. If there's an opportunity to pair a game in any way with an Off the Grid, we'll certainly take advantage of that. Also, two programs are going to be rolled out tomorrow to help Pleasant Hill businesses. The perks off a perks gift card program, which provides a 50% bonus for every $1 spent in town on local businesses, is set to restart for the Moms, Dads, and Grad season. And you can get details on this and how to buy the gift cards by going to the city's website. Also, if you go to the website, you will find that the social media website Technical Assistance Grant Program will be launching tomorrow. It will be an opportunity for retail stores, restaurants, and personal care businesses to receive grants of up to $7,500 to help improve their websites and social media marketing and other technical support. And this is all in the effort to increase our sales tax. And as I've said many times, we are a very low property tax city, and we live and die on sales tax and TOT. And so this is part of that effort to generate as much sales tax as possible for the city. And that concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Ms. Catalano. Anyone have any questions or comments for our city manager? Seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item Seven, Council Announcements and Reports. Seven point one is reports from council members on meetings or conferences attended at city expense. Don't believe anyone did that in the past two weeks. So let's move to seven point two, just general announcements from council members. Who has something newsworthy? Councilmember Noack?
I have just two things. I attended a two-day workshop with MTC talking about housing and transportation issues around the Bay Area, especially with the fiscal cliff coming up with much of the transit agencies. So that was a great two days spent focusing on goals and next steps and things that are going to be on our agenda the next six to nine months. Second thing, I attended the Ed Commission with Scott and Anathan in Ethan talking about some possible opportunities for improving the intersections where crossing guards currently are and the crossing guard program. So I think that was a well-received discussion and look forward to hearing more about that at upcoming city council meeting.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Rin?
Oh, yeah, just I'm the city's representative on marine clean energy and community choice aggregation. And really working hard on last summer, we had a heat wave where a couple of days in a row, we even got emergency alerts from CalISO that the grid was becoming overtaxed and potential blackouts. So we're really working aggressively to try to avoid that. But when you have so many different agencies out there trying to coordinate all that, but there's a lot of effort to try to prevent that again, so we can all get through the summer and have enough energy for everybody.
I had to turn the heat on today.
I know, right? I know it's hard to talk about it today. Last week it would have been better to bring this up, but the weather is what it is, so.
Councilmember Vincent?
Yes, I attended the Warriors Watch Party and the past two Off the Grids.
All right, I represented the city at the Valhalla Elementary School fundraising gala and auctioned off a mayor-for-the-day item to one of the students there. And we'll be meeting that student at an upcoming meeting. I also attended the Warrior Watch Party. I stayed till the end, unlike most of them. Seeing no other comments from council, move to public comment. Most of the cards I have are for particular Agenda Item 10.3, but I have several that I don't believe are relating to 10.3. So public comment, this is the time when you're welcome to address us on items that are not on the agenda or on the consent calendar. You'll have an opportunity to comment on the actual Agenda items when we call them. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. You can provide your public comments in person by giving a speaker card to our city clerk, who will then bring them up to the deus, or you can also call in through Zoom. Meeting ID 893-74862548, passcode 399456. This is all showing on the screen right now. If you're on Zoom, you use the raise the hand feature. If you're going to join us by phone, please call us at 669-900-6833. Press star nine to raise your hand. I'm going to start with Kalu Jamil. Welcome again.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Vice Mayor and then council members. Again, you see me here. I missed last month because we were sick. But I'm here again to find the result of our request for arpa money. I've been talking to Zach. And he's told he promised me to hear soon. I hope that is a positive news. But it's been like really tough on us, the providers. And now we are hitting July 1st, and we just heard a couple of weeks ago that the food program, because we serve children food and we are under food program with the state and federal money, and it's going to be cut dramatically for family childcare providers. Centers still will get 100%, but for us will get really less. And because we live in Pleasant Hill, so this is another cut for us because we, our zip code is not like Antioch or Pittsburgh or another. So I'm requested by the contract between us and the food program to serve breakfast, AM snack, lunch, PM snack. Some children stay late. I serve dinner too. And this has to be a certain quality of food. And I cannot ask the parents to help or to bring food. And so when I'm going to throw numbers, you're going to be surprised. It's 16 cents for snack, what you can feed a child 16 cent a snack. And it should be healthy snack, fruit, vegetables, no sugar, nothing. The gallon of milk, how much it is now, the egg, how much it is now, anything. And then we cook from secrash to the children. We stand up on our feet hours. We go to the stores to purchase certain things that under the list that we have to serve. Those children eat. Those children are growing. The formula that I have to serve the children and the infant, if their mom, her breastfeed, her milk is not enough, or some of the parents cannot breastfeeding. So how much the formula that I have to buy to those children? If I got this arpa money, I would decide to separate it by months. And each month I'll, it will help me a little bit to pay for the children nutrition because they need that. They spend 10 hours plus, 11 hour plus staying with us. So other providers, we are high-quality program. And when I say high-quality program, it means I have to spend money. There's nothing free in this country. So when I say I'm high-quality providing art and materials and toys for fine motor skills, for gross motor skills, this is all money. Those children, there's wear and tear. I cannot tell the child I'm teaching them to not rip a book, but they are still two years old. They chew, they rip. And also, you know, when they color with markers, they will leave it sometimes open and then dry. So our expense is getting higher and higher. The everything, the inflation is so high too. So we really, really need your help at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Marla Katania? Or is it Maria? Sorry, Maria.
Good evening, City Council members. My name is Maria Katania. I have been a resident of Pleasant Hill for the last 30 years. I'm originally from Honduras. And after living in a couple cities before Pleasant Hill for a few years, I ended up in Pleasant Hill, and I love Pleasant Hill. I have raised both of my children in Pleasant Hill. And then I opened my home childcare 23 years ago in the year 2000. And in the last 23 years, I faced small and large challenges running my home daycare. Some had been financial, some had been illnesses, and the pandemic was the last one. And but it is something that I love to do and something that I do really well. And I'm very proud of doing childcare for a living. And I overcome all of that. And I consider myself a strong woman doing childcare. I have a waiting list right now for all the way up to next year. So but financially, it's a little bit of struggle. Like right now, I need to build a new playground. Because my playground that I built in the year 2000, I demolished the whole playground. Because it's all, it was all, it was. So I demolished and I'm saving to build another playground. I got three codes for a playground. It ran from $12,000 to $60,000. I didn't know a playground would cost that much. But I know I might not get arpa for that much. But even if it's a small amount, I can use towards my playground. Again, I want to thank you for running such a beautiful city, and I love Pleasant Hill. I mean, what else I can say? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Katania.
You're welcome.
Our next speaker is Mervat Kamal. Did I pronounce that correctly?
I'm sorry?
Did I pronounce your name correctly?
Mervat, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, thank you. Hi, my name is Mervat. I have a small childcare in Pleasant Hill for more than 20 years now. And we are here once again. And as we mentioned before, we won't stop until we got our grant. So we'll be here every month until we come to an agreement. We have been showing up for continuous six months now. And it seems like our voice has not been taken into constriction. And we like, we're being ignored. So it seems like you don't feel a grant from our city for our hard work with younger children is deserved. So as each one of us carries as professional providers who had degree and hold the best experience for at least 10 years working with children for the future. We have stated time after time to hardship that comes with being a childcare provider. So what will it take for us to be heard? We will continue to show up until we are heard, and we will not give up. As everyone in this room has a child or even has a child or even grandchild and knows the struggle it takes to watch one child. So imagine how difficult for us it must be to watch roughly eight to 14 kids varying in ages. The parent of the children in my care have even mentioned numerous times the difficulty and stress I must be undertaking care of all their kids five days a week, 10 hours each day, teaching them, changing diapers, working on projects and activities, cooking food, cleaning, and more. And still, our city doesn't recognize the hard work as providers do. And how will our hard work give to the community? As mentioned, we will be here again and again until our voices are heard. We have goal to go to each city in Bay Area to ask for help. So we done with the city of Concord. We are in Pleasant Hill now. And next time we go Brentwood, like we go Muraga, we go Lafayette, and we keep going until we reach our goal. So thank you so much, and we will see you next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Catalano, the city is reviewing the request. I believe Zach Seal, our Economic Development Manager, has been reviewing the request.
Yes, and Zach has assisted in getting some county money to members of the group. And we certainly can give an update on that at the next council meeting. But we also do have the request, and we are in the process of reviewing it.
Thank you. Is there any other comment here in chambers? Seeing none, we'll turn to our online audience. Do we have any hands raised for public comment?
There are no hands raised.
All right, we'll close public comment at this time and move on to number nine, which is the Consent Calendar. All matters on the consent calendar are considered by the council to be routine and enacted by one motion. There's no separate council discussion unless requested by a council member prior to the time the council votes on the motion to adopt. Would like to note that the Agenda Items 9.5 and 9.6 have been continued to the council meeting of May 15. Do I have a motion to adopt the remainder of the Consent Calendar Items 9.1 through 9.4?
So moved. Second.
A motion from Vice Mayor Rin and a second from Councilmember Vincent.
Yes?
Rin?
Yes.
Chess?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes. Moving to the Action Calendar, Item 10.1 is to adopt a resolution accepting the bid and awarding a construction contract for the Taylor Boulevard Improvements Project. I believe we have. Oh. That's not Anathan.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Deirdre Castillo.
Deirdre, you can lower the microphone and the podium if you like.
Wow, this is totally new. I'm used to doing everything remotely. So I don't, how do I get this thing up on the screen? Alene? Perfect.
Look at that. You ask and it will happen.
I know, it's like magic. Anyway, so this is, we just opened bids for this Taylor Boulevard Improvement Project. So this project, what we're going, what we propose to do is install a traffic signal at the intersection of Taylor Boulevard and Civic Drive. And we are also going to install sidewalk along Taylor Boulevard between Ruth and Civic Drive. And then also on both sides of Civic Drive. So here, what we have is our new striping plan for our traffic signal. So we met with Traffic Safety Commission and members of the police department. And we went through like different lane configurations, and this was what we chose to do. We're also going to have the bike lanes in here on Taylor Boulevard. And then like, and then the crosswalk, that'll connect up to a path on the other side of Taylor Boulevard. This shows just the pathway that's going to be along Taylor Boulevard along the north side. So in some cases, it's right next to the existing asphalt berm or a curb. And then other cases, we kind of meander it a little bit. Okay, so this is the portion of the sidewalk that's along Civic Drive. What we did on this project was we had the main bid considered the sidewalk along the east side of Civic Drive. And then we had an alternate bid item to also add the sidewalk along the west side of Civic Drive. And we did it that way just because we knew we had to have sidewalk on one side, but we were afraid we didn't want to go over budget. So here's the alternate bid item, and we are proposing to construct that sidewalk as well. So this project is consistent with our Bike and Ped Master Plan. In fact, the new Bike and Ped Master Plan already considers this one as built because it was already in the CIP. Here, it shows this project in the CIP. One really cool thing about this project is we were able to get two different TDA grants. One was for $52,800, the other was for $100,000. And one of them was for the signal, and then the other one was for the sidewalk improvements. Other than that, this project is funded mostly with Measure K, and then there's also some traffic mitigation funds. So we opened the bids on April 18th, and Curx Engineering is the lowest bidder. Curx is actually, is our contractor who built the Gregory Gardens Storm Drain Project. And he's very local, so we're very familiar with him, and he's very easy to work with. Our construction estimate was $1.5 million, and the bid came in just slightly under that, And then you can also see from all six of the bids, all of the numbers were really close. So we have to award, pat ourselves on the back because obviously our contract documents were pretty good. If everyone's coming in at the same number, really, or similar numbers. This just shows how we're going to pay for the project. We have a, the construction contract is also including that alternate bid item. And then we just have the construction contingency of 10%. And for during the construction of the project, we're going to oversee it ourselves. We're not going to hire it out. There's just like a couple of times we'll have to call the design engineer for the traffic signal portions, like setting up the signal timing sheets. That is my presentation, so we recommend that you accept the bid and award the construction contract to Curx Engineering. You have any questions?
I do. Ms. Castillo, assuming the council approved this tonight, what is the timeline for the actual construction of these improvements?
Right. The contractor could start right away, right away, being in like two weeks. Or we may just wait a couple of weeks longer, make sure school's out. Probably be the prudent thing to do. So as soon as school's out, they can construct all of the sidewalk, the traffic signal pole foundations, all of the prep work, you know, putting the conduits in the ground for the signal. And then we take a break because the signal poles take a long time to be delivered. During the Oak Park-Monticello project, that of course was during COVID, it was nine months before we saw signal poles. I've been hearing that it's about six months right now. But there's not much we can do about that. We just have to wait for them to arrive. So there will be a time where, you know, the sidewalk improvements will be in place. We'll have the handicap ramps, but then nothing's happening until we get the poles. And then once we do get the signal poles in, it goes pretty quickly. You know, you put them up, get the signal running, and then we'll do the lane configurations, you know, the striping slurry seal, and then the striping improvements.
Just in terms of the length of the project excluding the delivery of the poles, the sidewalk enhancements and the crosswalk, how long is that going to take if it started at the end of the school year?
Yeah, the sidewalk, all of those, I think they've got three weeks. But then we added the other, the other portion of the sidewalk. So I'd say three to four weeks to construct everything before the poles get there.
Was there a crosswalk enhancement across Taylor?
Yes, yes.
Is that implemented before the pole arrives, or is that have to wait until the pole arrives?
I don't think that we would stripe that right away. I think that we would wait. We're not going to put in a crosswalk without those pedestrians being protected by that signal. So we would have to wait on that and do it all at once. Usually when you turn on a signal, that's when you stripe it for it. You stripe the street at that time.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Councilmember Vincent?
Was there a request for any other additional bids besides the one for the extra sidewalk work? Alternatives, any other alternative bids or just the one?
No, we just had one alternative bid item, and that was the additional sidewalk.
Thank you.
Presumably, the poles will be ordered right away.
Yes.
So hopefully that timeframe is a little shorter between when the sidewalks are done and the poles are there.
Yeah, what I did is in the specifications, I said that the contractors, as soon as they get the notice received, they have 10 working days to pothole for the utilities. So they'll go out there, they'll pothole where we think the poles are going to be. That way, we make sure we measure the mast arm length and everything correctly. And at that point, then they place the order for the poles. So they have the first 10 days they have to place that order.
Yeah, I think it would be great to have the crosswalk painted across Civic, not across Taylor, because that really needs the lights. But maybe across Civic, because there is quite a bit of, with the sidewalks and people are stopping at the stop, stop sign there anyway. But it would be, especially if school starts, it would be good to have that portion striped, even if the cross-taylor isn't striped.
Yeah, we can look at that for sure.
Okay, that's great. Thanks.
Any other questions?
Seeing none, we'll open a public comment. Is there any public comment on this item? Looking into the chambers here. Seeing none. Do we have any public comment on our virtual audience?
There are no hands raised.
All right, we'll close public comments. Bring it back to council. Any discussion?
No, but I will move the item.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Noack and a second from Vice Mayor Rin.
Noack?
Yes.
Rin?
Yes.
Chess?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes, the resolution is adopted. Moving to Item 10.2 is to adopt a resolution authorizing an increase of the BHM Construction Inc. purchase order in the amount of $743,616, previously approved scope for the Pleasant Hill Library Project. This is a matter that we heard, I believe, at a prior council meeting, but there is some additional information to be presented. And we have Anathan appearing from the library parking lot.
Yes, I am in the library parking lot, but in Sicily.
Yes, I am in the library parking lot, but in Sicily early, but good morning and good evening to you all.
They've copied our design over there?
I did, you know, that's my new job, copy and sell.
All right, take it away.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'll keep this presentation short. I'm just going to do a quick, share my screen. Can bear with me. I hope you can all see the presentation.
We can.
Okay, perfect. So this is to increase the purchase order for BHM for the work we have done. Back in February second, two thousand twenty-two, the Budget Committee heard a presentation from the staff adding the Tesla solar panels and low voltage lighting and library moving and other utility costs to the overall project. Then the week later, in February seventh, two thousand twenty-two, council heard the same item from the staff and authorized the city manager to execute an agreement with Tesla directly to install the solar panels and also authorize the city manager to further take all actions to facilitate or install the low voltage system, which is pretty much the IT-related items as well as the utility work to the project. However, on the resolution, it did not have an explicit language clearly stating that the project or can, most of the construction is going to be done by BHM. Just gave the city manager authorized to, you know, do the work and spend the money, but didn't clearly say it was going to be BHM doing the work, was anticipated. So just to clarify that paperwork item to make sure that in the future, if an auditor were to have any questions, this will clearly identify the stories and tell it asses. And recently, on March seventh, two thousand twenty-three, part of the acceptance, the work from BHM, we clearly show the work, we showed it on the budget sheet as well. So we have, we've been very consistent. So right now, what the item in front of you is to clean up the paperwork and make it correct. So that way, we can always have a very clean paperwork trail for this project, as well as for any auditing in the future. With that, I'll be happy to take any questions you may have.
Any questions, Anathan? Vice Mayor Rin?
I just want to clarify. Sorry, you must have an Italian accent because I was having a hard time. So what you're saying is we just want to clarify who did the work on the Tesla power wall?
Correct, the council approved it for the work and Budget Committee approved it, but it didn't specifically say it was going to be BHM doing that work. So this will pretty much clean up the paperwork and show that BHM did the work, and that's where the funding is going in. And all the funding has been accounted for and no fiscal impact to the project.
Okay, thanks.
What time is it in Sicily?
Uh, I got up at three thirty AM. Right now it's four o'clock.
Well, thank you. Just hang on. Let's have public comment on this item. Do we have any public comment in the chambers? Seeing none, we'll turn to our Zoom audience. Any hands raised?
There are no hands raised.
Uh, thank you, and thank you, Anathan, for your dedication to your craft.
Thank you.
Well, now, take a vote on this?
I'll move the item.
Move it, somebody move it.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Councilmember Nowak and a second by Vice Mayor Rin.
Nowak?
Yes.
Rin?
Yes.
Chess?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes, the resolution is adopted. Moving to item ten point three, another public hearing to consider draft maps and composition of districts for by-district elections. I will turn to our city attorney, Janet Coulson, to start this discussion.
Thank you. And can we get Jim Priest up on the screen?
Good evening.
Thank you. Jim is one of my partners at Best Western Krieger. And
Is your microphone on? Is your microphone on?
My microphone is, yes.
I get it, Jim's. I didn't know if yours was on.
It's showing green. Should I lean into it more?
I could hear you.
Okay. So we are now at the point in the districting process where we're looking at actual maps. As you recall, we've had a total of three hearings where we've taken input from the public. And mostly in April, March and April. And we have for tonight, two demographer drawn maps. One is a five district. That is listed in the maps that are down here, the color maps, that is draft map one, five districts. And there's also a demographer drafted, draft map one, four districts and directly elected mayor. We also have in this packet, two other maps presented by members of the public, draft map two and draft map three. They are both five district maps. And what happens when a member of the public submits a map, a draft map, is it goes to the demographer and he checks it, runs it through his program. And if you will notice on the back of the colored maps, there's a bunch of figures on the back. And this is trying to achieve an somewhat of an apples-to-apples comparison for the maps. This was all posted on the website. Statutory, these maps, all of them, the ones from the members of the public that have been reviewed by the demographer, as well as the demographer drawn maps, have to be posted on the website, have to be out seven days prior to this hearing on the maps, discussion of them. Subsequent to these maps going out and being posted, we have also received an additional three maps from the public. And those are with the demographer. Well, those have been gone through the demographer. They have been posted on the website. They were posted on Friday. But they have not had the statutory required seven-day timeframe to be out for people to look at them, consider them. And so those maps will be added to these, these four plus those three, seven maps for Saturday's meeting, Saturday, May sixth, two P M. And all of those maps will be available for discussion at that point. There will be a staff report that will come out Wednesday or Thursday of this week. I'm not sure exactly when yet. That will do some analysis on those additional maps. And we're still in the discussion stages. No decisions have to be made. We're asking questions. We're looking at figures and having discussion about these maps. Uh, one of the two things that are kind of important that I think we should, we should look at. When you look at the, the maps, you will see total deviation. That number, I suppose, under case law, is supposed to be under 10%. So you'll see that draft map one, four districts with the directly elected mayor is a seven point two-five percent deviation. The five district draft map one is a six point four-eight percent deviation. And draft map two is seven point four-three, draft map three is nine point two-five. And Jim, if you could probably provide a better explanation than I can, but, but I'll start, I'll try and you can correct me. My understanding is that is the deviation between the population, the highest and lowest populations for the maps in the districts. Is that correct?
Uh, that's correct, Ms. Coulson. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Jim Priest. Yes, the, the total deviation is based on total population. And as long as it is under 10%, then it is within the acceptable deviation there. And it meets the equality standard under the California, or under the federal constitution and the Federal Voting Rights Act. So all of these maps are under 10% deviation, therefore they meet that standard.
And the next thing I think that it's, it's important to look at is the minority representation. And that we're looking at is the, something called the CBAP, right? And that is the citizen.
Sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
No, no, I think it's important that we, we understand what we're, with all the numbers on the back here, what we're looking at. There is a calculation to, to find out the percentage of minority representation. And this is a minority coalition. It is not possible to have a single minority majority district here in Pleasant Hill. And so I think it's important that we, we all understand it's citizen voting age that we're looking at, not a total percentage, not number of people, not, that would be everybody, even youngsters, and not the voting age population, because that could contain people who are not citizens and not permitted to vote. So it's the citizen voting age is the important thing to be looking at. And as it says in the staff report, what we've listed in the staff report is just the highest minority representation for each one of the districts. So you'll see that on the draft map one, four districts with the directly elected mayor, you achieve a forty-two point three percent in District Three. The other districts, District One has about a twenty-nine percent. District Two has about twenty-four percent, and District Four has about a thirty point five percent. So District Three for that four district and a directly elected mayor is forty-two point three percent for the minority representation. Moving to draft map one, which is five districts. This is the best and the highest number that, that we've been able to achieve here. District Three has forty-five point six, forty-five point seven. And there's, these are rounding numbers here. So District Three is the highest one for this map. So District One on this map is at thirty point three percent. District Two, down on the bottom, the green one, is thirty-one point two-five. District Four, twenty-one point six, and District Five, twenty-nine. So as you can see, District Three is forty-five point six. That's the highest. It's the highest on, on maps. Going to the citizen submitted maps, map two, five districts. The first district, District One, is in blue of the top, forty-two point one percent. That's the highest there. Two is at twenty-seven point nine. Three is at thirty-five point nine five. Four is at twenty-nine point one. And five is at twenty-one point eight seven. And finally, draft map three from the public. District One, blue of the top, forty-two point one for District Two, twenty-eight point two. District Three is thirty-five point nine five, District Four, twenty-eight point eight, and District Five, twenty-one point eight seven. So as you can see from here, now we're just talking about these four maps. And as I said, there'll be three more on Saturday. We've even received yet another one that came in today, which was a revision of one that had already been received. So that one will not actually be available until the twenty-second meeting. But we also want to make sure that we put in here a deadline for submittal of publicly submitted maps. And given us, given the time necessary to run them through the demographer and the seven-day posting requirement, we are taking maps from the public up until Tuesday, May ninth, at five P M. Those have to go to the city clerk. It's Tuesday, May ninth, at five P M. Comments are always welcome. We can, we will always receive comments. It's just that the process we have to go through with the maps requires that we have time to send them to the demographer, get them back, put them on the website, and have them up for seven days. And so we are looking at the meeting on the twenty-second, and that's how that deadline came about. So this is just a further discussion and answering of questions. We're not making any decisions tonight. We're just looking at the first set of maps, getting used to looking at them and trying to understand what we're looking at.
I should interrupt there for one second. Just, you threw a lot of statistics at us. So if I heard you correctly, there is no map and no district within any of the maps on the agenda tonight that has a minority-majority district.
A single minority, no.
Coalition minority district. There's no majority-minority.
Fifty percent or greater, no.
Under no, none of the maps provided by the public and none, the two from the demographer, none of them have a district that has a minority-majority coalition district.
Correct.
And if I understood you correctly, the one map had one district with a forty-five percent minority coalition. And then the next maps after that are in the forty-three to forty-two percent range?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Are there other questions?
I'm sure there are, but let's, let's continue on.
Okay. There is. Let's see, where do I go here? You'll bear with me for one brief moment. So we have, there are several criteria that are looked at. And we have a hierarchy. I guess there's a, a weighting of criteria. Jim, do you have that handy? I'm trying to find it right now.
Uh, you know, I could provide some commentary.
Well, I think, here it is. I've got it. So the criteria runs with equal population in the districts is really important. It's probably one of the most important things. The districts need to be equal as much, as close as possible. Contiguity of districts is, is next. Respect communities of interest. We've had a lot of talk about that. That, that comes into play. It's third. Easily understood district boundaries, like natural boundaries, streets used as dividers, other natural boundaries. That's important to use those. The districts need to be compact, so the compactness of the districts is really important. And then the minority districts. There is no, as we just discussed, as you just asked, there's no true majority-minority district here in Pleasant Hill. But there is, we get close with minority coalition. And that's, that's what these numbers reflect is a coalition, all minorities grouped together. So if you take all these factors, and there's no precise formula, I mean, this is, this is something that we, we look at and we try to make the best of all of these different factors coming into play. And you can kind of look at the maps and you can look at the figures on the maps and understand how they were calculated and then see which one gives you the best result as far as the minority coalition is concerned. But the other factors do come into play. It's not the sole focus. Jim, do you have any other thoughts about that that you'd like to convey?
Uh, no, I think you've largely touched on it. I will clarify, uh, under the Federal Voting Rights Act, if it were possible to form a true majority-minority district, a single minority that constitutes 50% plus one, the Federal Voting Rights Act requires you to form a district like that. It does not require that for majority-minority coalition districts. However, under the more general, being consistent with the policies of the Federal Voting Rights Act, the California Voting Rights Act, it is a good thing to get that coalition number on the higher side. However, frankly, based on the numbers of the four maps submitted, you know, they're, they're fairly close in number. As Ms. Coulson said, the five district map, number one, gets us the highest with District Three at forty-five point six percent, majority-minority coalition. The others The others are hovering right around forty-two. But we're close enough with all of those that all of them are viable options to consider.
Do you, if you look at your staff report, you can see a summary of the four maps and you'll see the minority C VAP coalition. You'll see which districts give you that. So you see that that three of them are are right around forty-two point two, forty-two point three, and then you have one that's forty-five point seven. But you need to look at other factors involved as well. It's not just one single thing you look at, one single number. Happy to answer any other questions you may have.
So this might be for Ms. Coulson or your colleague. So where we have no map and no district that has a minority majority coalition, majority-minority coalition, I would think that the guiding criteria is also to try to create as many minority-majority coalition, just minority coalition districts with the highest percentages, even though we'll never get to a majority. Is that fair?
It's a fair statement to say that it's a, it's a good policy to try to get that number higher, but it is not absolutely, especially in this case, because the numbers are so relatively close. I don't believe that, for example, one must choose the five district or the map one five district over the others, just because it's about three percent higher minority-majority or minority coalition. I want to stop using the word majority because none of these have a majority, even as a coalition. So even though five district map one has the highest percentage of minority coalition C VAP voters, that does not necessarily preclude considering map one four district or maps two or three, because the numbers are pretty close. And as Ms. Coulson indicated, there's a number of factors to consider, not just the minority coalition, but also, you know, are we respecting communities of interest, contiguity, compactness, those type of policies as well.
Right, if if a drawer of the map ignored those other criteria just to achieve the highest minority coalition, the council could reject that map because it didn't respect the other criteria.
That's correct. That's correct. You need to respect each of the criteria and those are what provides the limitations, provides the boundaries within which the demographer drafts and analyzes these maps for legal compliance.
Anyone have any other questions for our city attorney or her colleague?
Not at this point.
I have one. Yes. When you look at the population deviation, it ranges from six point four eight to nine point two five. And I, the first factor you look at is equal population. So as, as long as they're under ten percent, are they all just as viable? Or is the six point four eight a better choice than the seven point four three at that first level?
Right, that, that would be a policy issue. As long as it's under the ten percent threshold, then it is within the acceptable deviation range under law. So you don't, you're not forced to go with one that's maybe a percent or two lower in deviation. It's often viewed as a good thing to consider, but it's not absolutely binding there. You could go, if, if, if you see other benefits to other maps, you could go with a map that has a somewhat higher deviation. And in this case, we're talking about just, you know, a few percent here and there. But all of them are legal under the population equality standard because they stay within the ten percent deviation.
Thank you.
Just want to drill down a little bit further on the acronym C VAP, Citizen Voting Age Population. Can you tell us what that is?
Certainly. Let me, let me take you down the hierarchy of people in this process. We have total population. Total population are living, breathing human beings of any age living in Pleasant Hill. That's total population, and that's where we focus on the deviation factor. Because under the Supreme Court's decision in UNO B. Abbott, you have to look at total population, not voting age in that case. But then you get to the next tier that you'll see in the statistics, which is voting age population. Not the most relevant statistic for this purpose, but it's included as the demographic analysis anyway. Total voting age population are, again, living, breathing human beings that are eighteen years or older, living in Pleasant Hill. Then you get to the next tier, and that's the one that's most relevant here for purposes of minority representation, minority coalitions, and that's C VAP, Citizen Voting Age Population. That is citizens living in Pleasant Hill who are eighteen years of age or older. And actually, though it's not relevant to this, we do drill down in election law to one more level in some cases, in the context, in other contexts, which is registered voters. Those are citizens that are a voting age population who have actually registered. C VAP does not distinguish between those who are actually registered to vote and those who are not. As long as you are a citizen, eighteen years of age and eligible to vote, whether you're registered or not, you count. And that is the relevant statistic for determining the minority coalition issue is citizen voting age population. Voting age population is not the relevant statistic here. So again, we're looking at that top tier total population and that third tier down, citizen voting age population.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I just a quick one. Do we, do we know what the total registered voters are in Pleasant Hill?
I don't have that information. I don't know if the clerk knows the total number of registered voters. No, okay. I'm sure Danielle knows.
Yeah, I'm sure Danielle knows.
Yes.
We'll have to call her up.
No, we'll, we'll get that information.
We'll get it by Saturday. That'd be, that would be helpful to, to know.
We will.
Is there anything further to your presentation, Ms. Coulson?
No, not at this time.
Anything further, Jim, that you wanted to add before we move to public comment?
Uh, no, not at this time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So at this time, we will open up public comment. But before we take live comment, I'd like to report the city council did receive written correspondence on this item from a number of individuals. And that would be James Anderson, Karen Yap, Susan Hedgebeth, Michelle Simone, Kathy Teagarden, Anne Greenblatt. And Dr. Queetrann wrote to me, and I forwarded his email on to the city attorney and the city manager, and we'll make his comments part of public comment as well. I have a number of speaker cards on this item, and we'll start with those in chambers before we go to the Zoom audience. So let's start with Valerie Slovan.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. My name is Valerie Slovan. I live at nine seven eight Santa Cruz Drive. And I've attended a number of these meetings now, and I've also been on Zoom. And I have two requests. My first request is your next meeting, be more interactive. I just find this whole three minutes up here, sitting back down, listening to your comments, maybe answer questions and not having an opportunity to, to ask more questions, to be a little frustrated. So I think for this topic, it's complicated. At least it is for me. I'm still learning a lot. I would like to know what's going on, you know, how you feel. There's also been some articles that have also raised questions. So if you could, if you could make these meetings the last one to be a little bit more back and, you know, back and forth here so we can ask questions. My other request is I find these maps rather difficult to read. My eyesight isn't so great and I'm a visual person. So my request is that you, if you can, have them blown up, please, and put them on the wall, all of them, so we can see or up to them, you know, find out where we live, our street, because there's not a lot of detail here on the actual map. For me, I'm a visual person. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Slovan.
Next speaker is Amanda Zakets. Did I pronounce your last name correctly?
Sockage.
Sockage. Sockage, thank you.
Yeah, so my name's Amanda Sockage, and I'm a resident of Gregory Gardens. I've lived there for more than twenty years. Our neighborhood is the oldest in Pleasant Hill. It has smaller houses than most other areas of Pleasant Hill, has more of a working class population than areas with larger properties. You usually know you're in Gregory Gardens if you're on a street with a female name. I personally live on Eleanora. As far as I'm concerned, it's located east of Pleasant Hill Road, west of Contra Costa, north of Boyd Road and south of Taylor. Our neighborhood is also characterized by its proximity to downtown Pleasant Hill. I get to walk to off the grid in Pleasant Hill Park. And our elementary schools are Strandwood and Gregory Gardens. I was disappointed to see that the demographer's maps has Gregory Gardens broken into three separate districts labeled one, two, and three on both maps. I feel like this gives Gregory Gardens less of a voice in the city council. The five district map actually divides Gregory Gardens right along its historic center, Eleanora Drive, which means my neighbors across the street would be in a separate district from me. So I, I also like to point out, this is a separate topic, but like many houses in Pleasant Hill, my house has a racial covenant that was in effect from when my house was built from nineteen forty-nine to when the Fair Housing, the Fair Housing Act was passed in nineteen sixty-eight. This has limited the diversity of our city and also the voices on our council. So I feel it's important to draw the maps in such a way that if not a majority-minority district, a high percentage of minority voters are kept intact. From my perspective, the demographer's district maps were not drawn with an eye to the democratic, demographics of Pleasant Hill or its historic neighborhoods. But I have to wonder if it's to keep the current council members in office. I would like the demographer to go back to the community submitted maps because I feel like the community is now being ignored. Please keep Gregory Gardens together and please keep high percentage minority districts together. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nick Martinez. Nikki Martinez.
Hello and good evening. My name is Nikki Martinez, and I live on Ruth Drive with my husband and my two young children. I've been following the updates regarding the creation of the electoral maps for our city, and I strongly support draft map five as listed on the city's website. The map includes Camelback, Diablo Valley as District One, where my home is located, and Ellenwood, Sherman, Ankers, and Fair Oaks as District Three. I have family members who live in both of these districts, districts as well. Out of all the drafts listed on the city's website, this electoral map will allow constituents in these areas to be a collective voice about specifics, specific issues in their smaller neighborhoods. My concern with the other draft maps is that there are too many neighborhoods spread across different parts of the city grouped together. Issues in these neighborhoods are just too varying, and the needs of the minority neighborhoods won't be met. I strongly support the creation of draft map, draft map five on the city's website because it's the most inclusive map and it will serve the needs of the constituents best. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I do just want to point out that that map is not on the agenda tonight for the reasons expressed by the city manager, but your comments will be remembered when we actually get to talk about that map.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Marshall Lewis. Good evening, Mr. Lewis.
Yes, hello. My name is Marshall Lewis. I've lived in Pleasant Hill for roughly thirty years, first in Gregory Gardens, which both of the demographers' maps split into multiple districts, and then in Poet's Corner, which also gets split into multiple districts. And currently, I live near D V C in an area that also gets split into multiple districts. I am concerned that the graph maps proposed by the demographer don't indicate a deep understanding of the communities of interest that we have here in Pleasant Hill, which are very neighborhood-based. We have Gregory Gardens that's in the center. It's the core of the city. It's very well geographically defined. North of that, we have the area around D V C. South of that is Poet's Corner. And then from there, it's pretty easy to get east and west. And then you have a very straightforward template, which is reflected in most of the maps that have been submitted by the community. So I would encourage the council to bear that general architecture, north, south, east, west, center in mind, and to have districts that are a little bit more focused in on those neighborhoods as opposed to the somewhat more sprawling districts that are in the draft maps. I'd also like to make a few comments regarding the issue of the minority coalition representation. Most of the discussion that I saw focused on trying to get one district that had as strong minority coalition representation as possible. That can be important, but it's also important not to go too far because if you do that, you can end up packing most of the minority voters into one district. Oh, yes. Sorry, if you go too far with that, you can end up packing a lot of the minority voters into one district and then cracking remaining communities between the remaining districts. So the five district map is a very good example of that. We have District Three, which has very good minority representation. But then there are also significant minority communities that are on the far side of Contra Costa that get split into two different districts. And so instead of having one potential minority coalition district and one minority influence district, which could be two votes on council, you instead have one minority coalition district, and then the rest are just strongly majority. So I would also recommend trying to keep the area that is on the far side of Highway, or not a Highway four, of Contra Costa together. That is also just generally an area that is very easy to forget about. It's divided by a number of major pieces of transportation infrastructure. It's, it would greatly benefit from having one single council member to represent its interests and to remind the rest of the council that it does exist and it is part of Pleasant Hill and not part of Concord. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Next speaker is Jana Thompson.
Good evening.
Hello, my name is Jana Thompson, and I am a five-year resident of Pleasant Hill. My neighborhood of College Park is known by realtors as the entry point for home buyers into Pleasant Hill. Our experiences living by the Contra Costa Boulevard near and the off-ramps are vastly different from other neighborhoods. This past week, in our neighborhood, we have had two reported car break-ins on separate days. This past year, we have had three standoffs at the mall with police helicopters circling above our heads. Last year, on my son's birthday, while waiting at the light to cross Contra Costa Boulevard, there was a shooting at Lucille's, a block in front of me. Living by D V C, College Park High School, Gregory Gardens Elementary, and the Community Center, we also face litter being left behind on our lawns and in our streets. I have been followed home when I was out with my kids by members of the community who are unhoused. I have had an individual barricade themselves with my trash bins by the front of my house and try to start a fire to stay warm. Just the other night, I had an individual standing outside my house and yelling at my barking dog to come outside and see what he does. We have students racing down our curved street. We have experienced police cars chase people through our street and onto the onramps. Additionally, we own the luxury of planes flying over our neighborhood at low elevation, sometimes rattling the windows as they come in for a landing. And these are our shared experiences in our neighborhood. When we ask to keep the natural boundaries of College Park and not divide us, it is because we want a representative that is living the same experience as we are. And just like the corner lot from the last council meeting, we knew the challenges we would face when we bought our home with the airport and the schools. We didn't anticipate the growing We didn't anticipate the growing number of theft and not feeling safe to go on a run at dawn or dusk. But people buy where they can afford. Our neighborhood median household income is one hundred thousand a year. We have been grouped with the west side of Pleasant Hill, where the median income is two hundred thousand a year. Not only are we different with the issues that we face, we differ economically as well. We are asking for a creation of a Camelback Diablo Valley Council District and a Fair Oaks Sherman Acres Ellenwood Council District. All of the community-submitted maps outline versions of these two districts. We can say with confidence that residents of Pleasant Hill believe in a northeast and an east minority district. Additional community-submitted maps draw lines showing fifty percent minority in the Camelback Diablo Valley District and a forty-five percent minority in the Fair Oaks Sherman Acres Ellenwood Council District. We urge you to consider the community-drawn maps. Pleasant Hill prides itself in being a community where everyone belongs. You have the opportunity to elevate the voices of the minority by creating two minority districts. By doing so, you prove that we are for all the people of Pleasant Hill, and we are a place where every voice matters. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations on your appointment to the Diversity Commission.
Thank you. I'm so excited to make a difference.
All right. Uh, next, Andre Obolinski.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. Um, how do we define minority-majority? Is it income? Is it immigrant status? Is it the color of our skin? Is it our race? Is it our religion? There's a lot of factors that go into that. But one thing I want to make sure of is today, and this process is not a referendum on our current council. It's more of an opportunity that we have once in a lifetime to provide input and build agency for our community. It is not about us versus them. It's about a compromise, where we all walk away giving something up for the good of our city, our community, and our neighborhood. The spirit of the law and how we put it to practice will be a legacy all of us in this room will be remembered by. Today, I bring support for my neighbors east of Contra Costa. We are writing, signing petitions, Zooming, and coming here to give you our vision moving forward of an inclusive city that gives us a voice. We thank you and the previous councils for the beautiful city, library, mostly safe community we all come home to. And let's all move forward to build a legacy we all can be proud of. When we look at, uh, the community east of Contra Costa, which I know best because I live there, I've had several neighbors say, you know, I feel like I'm more part of Concord than Pleasant Hill. Our school is Fair Oaks. I don't know very many people whose kids go to that school. I, my kids don't. Um, most of the neighbors there, they put their kids in private school because they worry about, um, uh, what's going to happen to them when they're walking towards school or what's going, what their grades are going to be. We would like to see more investment in that side of the city. We'd like to see, uh, more activity in our school. But just the other day, like Jana was talking about, I had someone in front of my house trying to steal license plates off of my car because I live two blocks from Monument. We have people doing sideshows. We have, uh, uh, people going through the back trail, shooting off weapons, um, driving in, and, uh, scooters at all times of the night. And what we feel is different. So when we look at these maps, please, uh, uh, just focus on, um, the two districts north in Camelback and east of Contra Costa. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Obolinski. Next is Karen Yap.
That's good. That's good enough. Yep. Okay, good evening. My name is Karen Yap. Been here for thirty-nine years in Pleasant Hill. I was very disappointment, disappointed to see the demographers' map, which I've recreated here. Um, it, it, I've added to the map the total population in each section plus the percent of white in each section, um, that I got off that District R database. The stars show councilmember homes. Um, this map honestly is the worst version I could have imagined. There's virtually no way he could have drawn this without somebody giving direction to split up councilmembers. Yet, the law states you can't consider incumbents. Why would anyone draw a district line down Patterson and then take a sharp turn to go two blocks into Shelley instead of going to Oak Park? The only explanation is that it separates two councilmembers right there. Poet's Corner shouldn't be split up. Who would split Gregory Gardens into three parts? I used to live in the gardens. It feels like one cohesive community. The demographer put most of it in District Five, yet the southwest corner is split right down the middle of Carolyn Drive. Everything west of that is in Four. And in the northeast corner, the map moves the streets from Ruth to Contra Costa Boulevard into District Three. Why is DVC and College Park split down the middle, east to west? Why is Sherman Acres and Fair Oaks split in half? What is that gap in the middle of, at the far east of District Three that cuts it, District One that goes right through the middle of District Three? All homes east of Grayson Creek should be in the same district. Why are they split? Can you think of any reasonable explanation for that? I live on the far west side in Woodside Meadows, the furthest-south part of Number One. The proposed map puts my area into the huge District One that goes from Lafayette all the way to Pacheco. I can't recall the last time I was in that far north corner of Pleasant Hill. It's not my community. The issues we have in Woodside Meadows are not the same as the, what they have in Chilpancingo Parkway. Could you put up the second picture? I'm not a demographer, yet I believe I've made a better map. I submitted map number four on the city website, and since then, I improved my map. And I'm sure it could be better than this. My map does not split any neighborhoods. The population is similar between districts. It has a minority-majority district in Number Three, and it has a second district that's less than fifty-five percent white. I'd like to point out that my districts are contiguous and compact. District Four doesn't look so compact, but that's because that, to get that minority-majority, you, um, have to take that into consideration. So this map is not perfect, but it's better than Map One. So I'd like you to get rid of that gerrymandered Map One and do this the right way. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Yap. Dick Offerman. Next speaker, Dick Offerman.
Good evening. My name is Dick Offerman, and I'm from Pleasant Hill. I'm speaking tonight to voice my grave concern over your actions regarding the creation of the new bi-district maps. At the March sixth meeting, Mayor Flaherty said, "It doesn't seem like there can be any discretion on mapping as it is all voting-block data-driven using the twenty census census." I am here to ask the demographer to please explain to the voters just what data made you draw the district boundary going south down Patterson and then change direction and draw the boundary west for two blocks before then heading south, again, this time down Shelley. For all those students of city government, this is absolutely a perfect example of gerrymandering. The definition of partisan gerrymandering is when elected officials in charge of district mapping configure districts to favor a party, an incumbent, or a candidate. These maps do not follow some of the standard guidelines for map creation. First, preserving communities of interest. The cutting up of Gregory Gardens, Poet's Corner, and the DVC area is so wrong. You are denying the residents of these neighborhoods their fair representation on the council. Second, the need to be compact. I live in the suggested Number One district at Taylor and Grayson. There is no way we, in the far west and south location, share a district, should share a district that spreads across the whole city to the nor, far north of Pleasant Hill. My Woodside community, Woodside Meadows community of interest is Poet's Corner, not Chilpancingo Parkway. This needs to be corrected. Third, follow natural boundaries. That blatant boundary jog from Patterson to Shelley clearly taints this current demographer's efforts. It's clear from that blatant jog that the demographer was provided the home addresses of the council. Three of them live right at that jog, living within two blocks of each other. This is so wrong. Who provided the addresses? It is clear that the demographer was given information that will taint his efforts going ahead. We cannot trust him now. We need a different demographer. Better yet, we should start all over again, this time using a reliable independent commission to do the mapping. With a reliable independent commission, this will be all about the voters and not the current council or any more gerrymandering. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Offerman. Let's just let the speakers talk, okay? Uh, next speaker, Susan Hedges.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Susan Hedges, and I'm a resident of Pleasant Hill. Tonight is the first meeting where we can respond to the demographers' draft maps that were posted last week. I am very concerned that these maps do not reflect a thoughtful and unbiased offering. I'm trying to give you the benefit of the doubt, but it's getting harder. The whole point of this process under the California Voting Rights Act is to acknowledge the changing demographics of our city and make adjustments to include communities that have not been well represented, communities of color. Sometimes it's necessary for those of us who are white, who have historically, in general, had the majority of power and influence in this country, to make sustained efforts in the direction of bringing non-white folks into the circle. That's not always an easy thing to do, but if we believe in a representative democracy, we have to try. I looked up some census data for Pleasant Hill. In two thousand, the ratio of white to non-white residents was approximately seventy-seven to twenty-three. Ten years later, it was sixty-eight, thirty-two. Most recently, in twenty-twenty, it was sixty-fourty. In other words, over the past twenty years, the non-white population has increased from twenty-three percent to forty percent. I think we can expect this trend to continue, but so far, we do not see it represented on the city council. Now we have an opportunity to change that. I want us to embrace the change that's happening in our country, our state, and our city. Your job is to represent all the residents of Pleasant Hill. You may sincerely feel that you are doing it, but it's not enough. You need to try harder to welcome everyone into the political process. There are many who have offered ideas, including sample maps. Now about the maps. We also can see from the twenty-twenty census that most of the communities of color are located in the north and east parts of the city. Compare that to the locations of current councilmembers' homes, which are in the south and west parts of the city. It would make sense to choose one of the maps that would balance this out, but that's not what the demographer has offered us. Looking at his draft maps, it's impossible not to conclude that he drew them with the current councilmembers' locations in mind, and that's just not acceptable. How can we trust that the demographer was not influenced? We cannot. I am disappointed. The city council is here to represent all the residents of Pleasant Hill. Choosing a five-district map that creates two districts with strong minority communities is the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hedges. Next speaker is Yahudit Lieberman.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Yahudit Lieberman. I'm a twenty-two-year resident of Pleasant Hill. I need to say that I am appalled at how this process is going. I had hoped that you would undertake the responsibility of forming districts with the seriousness it deserves. Unfortunately, I have become convinced that you regard this process as a nuisance. You want to get through it as quickly as possible and with the least possible disruption to the status quo. You refused to ask for an extension to the tight deadline you were under. You refused to engage an independent commission to draw the lines. You engaged a demographer, and you stated publicly that the council would not involve itself in the demographers' work and that the demographers, the demographer would not know where any of you lived. So I was shocked to see video of a subsequent meeting in which Mayor Flaherty publicly stated where he lives and where, what he feels his neighborhood lines should be. Seems to me that the demographer knows exactly where all of you live and drew lines in order to favor your incumbency. Why else is there a line right through the Poet's Corner neighborhood, which I always think of as a coherent neighborhood, so that councilmembers who live only blocks apart are put into two distinct districts? I find it hard to believe that this is a coincidence. As far as I'm concerned, this process is tainted. The only way to make it right is to ask for the extension and start over with an independent commission. If you won't do that, at least accept one of the maps submitted by the public based on real neighborhood lines. At this point, I have lost all trust in you. None of you will get my voice, my vote, in the future. I have never before campaigned in a city election, but I will campaign against you if you run. And I will tell everyone I know in Pleasant Hill. I know quite a few people who ask me for recommendations when elections come around. And I know I'm not the only one who feels that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lieberman. Uh, Mr. Knapp, you gave written comment. Did you want to also speak or just submit? All right, thank you. We'll receive your written comment. Uh, next speaker is Steve Spafford. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name's Steve Spafford. I live on Roberta Avenue. Even though it's got a, a female name, it's actually considered part of Poet's Corner. And the reason I'm here is that, um, I'm going to kind of repeat what a lot of people have said is that I was very surprised to see in many of these maps that, um, our, Poet's Corner was kind of split up, if you will. And on numerous maps even, um, because we kind of make a U with Beatrice that we do a lot in that kind of mini neighborhood within the Poet's Corner neighborhood. And e, e, some of those maps also have Beatrice in a different district than, than Roberta. Um, and so I'm just here to, to kind of reiterate that uh, we should really focus on keeping neighborhoods together and not splitting up apart so that you have different districts. Um, and I don't think any of these fairly small changes would have any significant effect with regards to demographics. And so, um, I, looking at the maps that were submitted, I, I understand it's not considered tonight, but on the website, you had the six maps that were, and I would strongly recommend, uh, Map Six because that really did, does keep Poet's Corner as one neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Qui Tran.
Good evening. My name is Qui Tran, and I'm a resident of Pleasant Hill. Typically, I preface my statements as my own and not reflective of any organization of which I have an affiliation. And for the most part, that's true. Today, though, I'm here at the request of some minority organizations to present some collective thoughts regarding the submitted demographers' district map. First, though, just an acknowledgement that today is May first, the start of the Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month. This month is not only about celebrating the culture, traditions, and accomplishments of the AAPI community, but to also acknowledge that those significant contributions have not always been recognized. but to also acknowledge that those significant contributions have not always been recognized and that this is a group we continue to have struggles as well as barriers for equality and recognition. So with that backdrop, my comments will be related to the rights of minority groups, particularly the AAPI community, to be able to collectively exercise their right to vote. And given the time limits today, I will be focusing on the demographers' five-district map with District 3 being the identified coalition minority district. On Saturday, May 6, I will add additional comments about a proposed East district that was excluded on the demographers' maps. What I have given you, which I request to be included in the public record, is a zoom-in of the demographers' District 3. And what I've circled on there is what we're calling the Pleasant Hill Ismus. If you recall from geography, an ismus is a narrow strip of land connecting two larger areas. After the maps were released, then I saw this tiny strip. I went out and geolocated the area. And in front of you are the photos. It is essentially a narrow strip of concrete measuring 450 feet in length right in front of Sun Valley Mall, the parking structure. And that is the proposed connector from the Camelback Neighborhood to the Ellenwood Neighborhood. Now granted, all maps submitted to date are legally viable maps, but let me describe the demographers' district verbally to you as you look at it visually. District 3 includes Camelback Neighborhood, half-DVC Neighborhood, connected by this dangling 450-foot Pleasant Hill Ismus to 1/10 of the Gregory Gardens Neighborhood and 2/3 of the Ellenwood Neighborhood. That's right, you have fractions of neighborhoods connected together by a dangling strip of land. How is that improving the rights of minorities? Let me offer an easier way to create a coalition minority district. Take all of Camelback and all of DVC, bounded by Morello and Taylor. Done. Now, there is some nuance that would have to be made to adjust for population balance, but you can create a compact contiguous, meaning without any ismus, coalition minority district that keeps together, highlights, and strengthens the AAPI community, rather than the convoluted district the demographer suggested. In the spirit of the CVRA and in light of AAPI Heritage Month, we strongly urge you to reject the demographers' map and consider any of the five community-submitted maps that protects a northeast minority district. Council members, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight.
Thank you, Qui. Are there any other speakers here in chambers? Those are all the cards I have in chambers. Anyone else before I turn to our virtual audience? So here comes somebody. Could you just introduce yourself?
Yes. Hello, council members. My name is Michelle Simone and I'm a resident of Pleasant Hill. I'm asking that you honor your commitment to diversity as indicated in several resolutions that the city has passed in recent years, including the 2017 resolution declaring the city of Pleasant Hill's commitment to being a welcoming, inclusive, tolerant, and safe community for everyone, which specifically states that Pleasant Hill is a community that promotes the protection of human rights, social justice, equality, and diversity. So I applaud the city's effort to make everyone in the community feel welcome and included, and I urge that you take action to ensure that, quote, "The city not only honors but builds on the 2017 proclamation," or sorry, Ms. Resolution, as stated by former Mayor Harris in a Pioneer article that was published last year. The city council can build upon the resolution by adopting a fair map that takes into account diversity and does not divide the neighborhoods. The proposed maps drawn by the demographer divide neighborhoods and cultures, also known as communities of interest. I specifically wish to highlight the eastern part of Pleasant Hill, where the majority of our Latino, Asian, and mixed-race residents reside. To maintain communities of interest, eastern Pleasant Hill should be two districts, not three, as proposed by the demographers' maps. Please do not divide the community east of Contra Costa Boulevard or the DVC College Park community or Gregory Gardens or Poets Corner. In March, our current mayor wrote in the Pioneer, "Pleasant Hill is a welcoming, tolerant, and inclusive city committed to diversity. The city council is unwavering in its commitment to serve and protect all of our residents, and district elections are expected to advance that goal." With that in mind, I urge you to direct the demographer to create five districts that take into consideration community input. Do not divide neighborhoods and maximize the opportunity to create minority coalitions in our city, which is a goal of the California Voting Rights Act. Creating two districts in the east will provide minority voters an opportunity to elect representation, representatives of their choice, which is crucial for local government to be accountable to the entire community it serves. Adopting a five-district map that protects minority coalitions is not only consistent with the city's diversity statements and resolutions, it is also the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Simone. I'm going to turn to our virtual audience. Do we have any hands raised on Zoom?
We have two hands raised.
Please bring them in.
Good evening, council members. My name is Roxanne Creo Garza. I've raised my two children and lived in the northern district of Pleasant Hill for the past 25 years. My kids have played in every field in my neighborhood and both graduated from College Park and attended DVC. I'm here tonight because I reviewed the two maps that the city council commissioned. I was surprised to see my neighborhood, represented as District 1, included a small area south of Gregory Lane and west of Taylor Boulevard. This seems out of context with my community, as another speaker mentioned, and arbitrary. Secondly, when I provided public comment last month, I mentioned the need to represent the community of interest just west of where I live, around DVC, that is composed of a diverse and large population renting apartments and condos, known as District 1 in the community map and District 3 in the city's five-district map. I'm glad to see it's a district. However, I do see that two minority coalition populations in our city are separated into three districts, number 3, 5, and 2, which results in two outcomes. First, it packs two very different neighborhoods into one district and links them by utilizing, as a previous speaker just mentioned, a 450-foot concrete sidewalk, which again seems arbitrary. And secondly, it diffuses their voice and an opportunity for representation. I support the community maps 2 and 3 that depict Districts 1 and 3 since they are better representation of the actual neighborhoods and provide an opportunity for two minority coalition districts. Really, this represents the spirit of the bi-district state law. Even though some adults may not be able to vote, as your staffer mentioned earlier, it doesn't mean they're not part of the community. In fact, they are working in our local businesses and contributing to the economy of the city. You can choose only to focus on the demographers' population deviation statistics or we should be most focused on what constitutes a community of interest based on community input. To do this, you need to listen to your community rather than decide on what's legally acceptable. I'm in support of a five-district map option rather than four districts and a directly elected mayor because it'll provide the people of Pleasant Hill with city council members who have a pulse in their district and will represent the specific interests of very different communities of interest. My ask to you this evening is to support community maps that have had community input, represent the changing demographics of our city. We're no longer a monolith bedroom community representing one ethnicity and only single-family homeowners. Your constituents are looking for your leadership on this important issue. I know you'll rise to the important moment in this city's history. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garza. We have another caller, please.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Lindsay Dolman. I am here again and have been a resident for over 12 years and engaged in our community in various ways. I was delighted to see a mailing arrive in my mailbox and a sign at the library as a way to engage our community in this process. I am hoping today for some serious consideration of community-submitted maps as our city moves to district-based elections as I continue to be disappointed that you didn't take our community's input and suggestion for an unbiased committee to create these maps in the first place. Will you consider our community input now? The maps submitted by the community not only meet the criteria required by law, but also uphold the standard and intentions of the Voting Rights Act in giving our communities opportunities for their voices to be heard. These community-drawn maps, particularly Map 3 and the upcoming ones that will be distributed, 5 and 6, align with what I know of our communities of interest, and they do provide continuity of the districts and easily understood boundaries. The demographer-drawn maps are riddled with awkward angles and neighborhood divisions, and I'm concerned about potential future litigation regarding gerrymandering, an expense that I would like to avoid so we can continue to provide vital and life-enhancing services to our community. I respectfully request that you listen to and hear my fellow neighbors as we request consideration of these community-submitted maps as you, our elected officials, determine the maps as we move to district-based elections. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dolman. Any other callers on Zoom?
Two more hands raised.
Great.
Thank you. This is Kathy Gallagher. I'm a resident of Pleasant Hill and tonight representing the League of Women Voters of Diablo Valley. I'd like to read a letter that was sent to the council by League President Anne Gramlin, who couldn't be with us tonight. "The League of Women Voters of Diablo Valley is concerned about comments by Mayor Flaherty at the Pleasant Hill District Election Hearing on April 17, 2023. At the March 20, 2023 hearing, Councilmember Noack stated that council members would not share their place of residence or opinions about where district lines should be drawn. City Attorney Colson, Attorney Jim Priest, and the demographer agreed with that guidance to the city council. During discussion after the close of public comment at the April 17 hearing, the mayor shared where he lived and the boundaries of what he sees as his personal community of interest. The law is clear that district lines drawn in consideration of an incumbent is not an appropriate community of interest for drawing district maps. We urge the mayor and the city council to make every effort to avoid the appearance of inappropriate influence in the districting process. A transparent and robust process will increase public trust in our democratic elections. In the interest of full transparency, the League of Women Voters of Diablo Valley requests that Pleasant Hill share the public comment and data used by the demographer to draw district maps. Sincerely, Anne Gramlin, President, League of Women Voters of Diablo Valley." Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Hi, my name is Brian Thompson. I'm a 25-year resident of Pleasant Hill and I grew up in Poets Corner on Shelley Drive, where my parents still live today. I currently live on Ruth Drive in the College Park neighborhood. I want to start by thanking you for this opportunity to address these maps presented. While statistically, these maps are very similar, I've noticed, as well as many other speakers tonight, that there are major differences between the demographer maps as well and the community-drawn maps. It's clear the community-drawn maps have been done with an innate and intimate understanding of natural geographic and neighborhood boundaries, as well as an understanding of the communities within Pleasant Hill and the vastly different issues each community faces. The demographer-drawn maps have taken none of those important factors into account and in fact breaks up natural and historic communities throughout the city. Growing up in Poets Corner, I can confidently speak on the disservice the demographers' maps due to the Poets Corner and Far Oaks communities, but that's been well-covered already. I would like to focus on my neighborhood, College Park. As I said, I live on Ruth Drive. And in the demographer maps, I happen to live on a small finger where District 1 reaches to the far northeast end of the city and cuts District 3 in half. To accomplish this, District 1 cuts through a large non-residential area, including a business park, the YMCA, the community center, the police station, Valley View Middle School, and College Park High School, just to remove approximately 50 households from District 3. To me, this looks like gerrymandering. And this places me in the same district as residents living on the complete opposite end of the city. I mapped it out and my household would be in the same district as residents living more than three miles away. This completely removes myself and my immediate neighbors from the community we actually live in. It takes our voice away from the community where we are impacted the most. This gerrymandering is inappropriate and unnecessary, and it does not exist in the community maps that are presented. As a city council, you are the representatives of the residents of Pleasant Hill. It's up to you to do what is in the best interest of us, not what is in the best interest of yourselves. As a resident of Pleasant Hill, I ask you for two things. First, for Pleasant Hill, and second, for myself. For Pleasant Hill, I urge you to please choose one of the many community-drawn maps to District Pleasant Hill. In my opinion, Map 5 is a good option. We reject the maps drawn by the demographers as they do not represent the communities we live in. And for myself, I would like someone to explain the reasoning behind the fingering of District 1 cutting directly through my neighborhood. Whether it's the demographer or the city council members, what purpose does separating my vote from my community serve in District in Pleasant Hill? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Are there any other callers on Zoom?
There are no hands raised.
All right, one last opportunity for chambers. Any public comment that we have not already heard? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and bring this back to council for discussion.
I have two comments, Second May.
Please.
Okay. There was an individual who talked about large maps being blown up and put on the wall, and that is going to be available for Saturday. So those are going to be on the wall. But also, if you look at the website, there's a zoom-in and zoom-out feature on the maps through Google, and that's designed to be able to zero in or pull back or getting close in to look at the maps.
Great, thank you. Sure, go ahead.
I would have to check, but I would hope that we could have it at least a half hour, if not an hour, early.
Okay, sorry, I had my microphone off. I asked what time people could come in on Saturday to review the maps prior to the meeting starting at 2:00.
Correct, and we would try to have that either an hour or half an hour before the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Back to council, anyone? Well, fine, I will. So thank you very much for the public comment and those who wrote in as well. And thank you for those who provided your ideas on an actual map. I do want to say that this is not an adversarial hearing or proceeding or procedure. We are all on the same page, looking to draw districts that best represent the city of Pleasant Hill. I do appreciate that this came in the form of a litigation threat, which I think from a city attorney's perspective would seem to be adversarial. And so to the extent any of you perceived any of the comments from council or staff as adversarial, those are misinterpretations or misrepresentations of our position. So for that, I apologize on behalf of anyone who was perceived as being adversarial. This is not adversarial. Two, I agree with all of you that the demographers' maps do not generally reflect an intimate knowledge of our city, its boundaries, its borders, its neighborhoods, and its arterials and the natural boundaries. I cannot explain other than I believe the demographer was driven by the altruistic vision of creating a district that gave the greatest minority coalition representation, which is a laudable goal. The council would have, except for being told otherwise by the city attorney and the city attorney consultants, that that is just one of the factors. So the idea that the demographer tried to create a district that had the largest minority coalition is not a negative, and the ramifications of doing that should not be perceived as a negative either. When I stated my neighborhood, I did not give my address. Other people, some of you sitting in this room, are the ones that previously identified my neighborhood. It's public information that the map is drawn the way it is. If I had influence over it, it didn't work. If anybody looked at the demographers' map, I am districted out. So I just think that we need to get back on the same page of knowing that we are not adversaries here. That you may not like the demographers' map, trust me, I agree with you. So I don't know what else to tell you other than to get us all back on the same common vision of creating district maps that fairly represent the city, that achieve the multiple goals of being that achieve the multiple goals of being consistent with our boundaries and with trying to achieve majority coalitions in as many locations as possible, but also recognizing that there is no district in our city that has a majority-minority coalition or any other way. So I just want to make sure that we just start from common ground here. And with that, I will open it up to the rest of the council. Because there's many maps that we haven't discussed yet, so I just don't see it fruitful to express a position on a map other than the general comments I gave you. Councilmember Noah.
So I'm just going to follow up on your point. I think it's fairly evident that the demographer just used numbers. Otherwise, he would have known neighborhoods and things like that. But that was his goal, highest majority. And as you can tell from all the maps that everybody's been working on, none of them come close, none of them come to 45.6. So he did a statistical drawn maps, and that's how he got to that high number, period. And as Tim said, everybody's accusing, you know, of us drawing gerrymandering in this. The demographer's maps make two council members not be able to run next year, period. So clearly, we're not up here doing that. Third thing is, I don't want this to be adversarial, as Tim pointed out. We've got, I've got people sending us letters saying, "I'm told I'm associated with Martinez and not Lafayette or Walnut Creek," and things like that. Dividing up this city, this city has worked really hard and we have an excellent reputation for being a small community in that small community field, just like all the people that were at our Warriors Party, Off the Grid, at many of the events. It is a community, Pleasant Hill's not that big. We are a whole community, and to try to divide up this city and cause animosity between the groups is just wrong. That doesn't make it more inclusive, that makes it more divisive. So I know we have to do work on these maps, as Tim pointed out accurately, but let's take it down a notch and not make it so nasty and adversarial. We do want to be an inclusive city. We've seen our numbers go up. If you see our police force, our staff, our commissions, they are all very diverse. They are all very diverse. Take the time to look, and you will see that's the case. Now, city council, we all happen to live in the southern half. I live more than a mile away from any other council, but there are plenty of people here that want me to go into that group, even though my area does not associate with Poets Corner. We associate with Gregory Gardens, we associate with other aspects of it because we go to school to Strandwood. We associate with Grayson Woods and some other areas. But it's, people are out there are also designing maps with ulterior motives. So let's take it down, let's try to look at the communities that make sense, try to make sure that we can get minorities good representation, but let's take the animosity and the rhetoric down, please. Thank you.
Councilmember Shas?
Yeah. I share some of your disappointment in how the maps looked. I'm not a fan either, and I want to emphasize that this is an iterative process. This is not going to be done tonight, it's not going to be done the next meeting. This is an iterative process. And I think that, first of all, no one's going to, I mean, there's not, there's no map that we're ever going to create that's going to make every single person happy, right? That's just not possible. But I just want to emphasize that we're not, we're not done yet. We're not done yet, and when we are done, when we are done, we're going to have communities that are going to be better represented in the sense that they are smaller groups. They don't have to raise money to canvas an entire city anymore, right? Wasn't that kind of where this kind of started from? Was the ability for people to be able to, you know, minority candidates to be able to have that opportunity? Now, these districts are going to be smaller. They're not going to be perfect, but it affords people a better opportunity, right? So it's an iterative process and we're not done. The other thing I share the disappointment in, and I've expressed this to staff, that's, this wasn't, our website could be better. And I've asked staff to see what we can do, because when I kind of, when I looked at some of this stuff too, I was kind of like, my initial reaction was really, you know, what is this? But it's my job to kind of look into it really deeply, right, and figure that out. But for the average person who's out there, they're not going to take the time to do that, or they don't have the time. They're taking care of their families, they're working, you know, hard. I don't expect, but I do expect to be able to look at that and be able to discern reasonably quickly as to what's going on. So I think as a city, we can, you know, we can improve on that. But hey, this is the first time we've ever had to do this, right? So I give staff, you know, some slack on that, but I did express that. So there are, nothing's perfect at all. But I just wanted, that was just one thing I wanted to iterate, is that this is iterative, and, you know, I look forward to seeing the review and I look forward to being back here. I look forward to being back here on Saturday. You guys might think I'm not, but I am. Especially now, I'm really looking forward to coming back on Saturday and maybe walk around here and look at the maps with you. So I hope you can come back then. Thank you.
Anyone else want to have any comments?
I did want to add one thing, I forgot to, one thing I forgot to add. So while four of us live in the, five of us live in the southern half of the city, we have had council members from the north, we've had them from Gregory Gardens, we've had them from all over town. So for some reason, because we all happen to live in the south, that's just a coincidence. Karen Mitchoff, who is a county supervisor, lived in Camelback. She lives in Camelback. David Durant lives off Paso Nogal. And Matt, when he first ran, was in Gregory Gardens. We have been all over this city. So let's not think that the city council, just because we happen to live there right now, that's where we always come from. It's not the case. So I just wanted to make that point, because there's been a lot of accusations about that as well. It just happens to be this go-around. And I do want to say, all of us up here have spent years and years working for the betterment of the city. We make $584 a month, period. So I counted up my hours. My husband said, "What do you think your hourly rate is?" Mine's about $4.86 an hour, what I put in for the city. I'm not doing this for anything except to give back to my city, and all my council members are the same. We don't deserve accusations, we don't deserve our integrity being questioned. We are up here for the benefit of the city, period. Thank you.
Yeah, Councilmember Shas, sure.
Thank you. I left one thing out in my previous comment. Just for full disclosure, I met over the weekend with Dr. Queetrann, and we had a conversation about this. So I just wanted to, you know, under full disclosure to the community, I wanted to let people know that. I also want to let know people know that he and I sat down in a park and had a conversation about it. So if there's anybody here today, tonight, or you can reach me, wants to have a conversation, and rather than just lobbing emails back and forth, I'd be happy to do so. So I just want to point that out.
Thank you. Councilmember Vincent?
I just want to add also, when I saw the demographer's map, I was also very disappointed by what I saw. I was actually hoping he would be available tonight so we could ask him some questions. I don't know if he will be down the road. But I do appreciate all the time you have put into developing your maps and sharing your thoughts with us. I thought you expressed yourself in a great way, so I appreciate you being here. I agree, we're working together to resolve this, and let's go forward and get this done.
Well, thank you.
If I may?
Certainly.
Councilmember Vincent, if you have questions, it may be possible that Jim Priest can answer them. Can you let us know what those are?
Sure. Think she was suggesting if you have questions now, if you wanted to.
Well, I was interested in the information that you used to come up with the map, because it looks like you based it on population, and we've had all these hearings to talk about community of interest, and there's, I don't know how we applied that information.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we can go back and we can talk to the demographer further about this. Our understanding is that there was an effort to maximize non-white citizen voting age population in particular districts. Again, not a true majority-minority under the fiverr, but it was an effort to maximize that number. So I understand that. What we can certainly do is we can go back to the demographer and talk about what we've heard today about communities of interest and see what can be done about adjusting that to perhaps address some of the concerns raised by the public and by the council. That's what I can tell you at this point.
Do you have any other questions?
I do not, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Colson, did you have some other comments you wanted to make?
No, I just wanted to make sure that you knew the resources here if you have questions.
All right, Vice Mayor Ren, you had some comments?
Yeah, just since everyone else is commenting, and I too saw the map and, you know, I saw that where it was carved up, that yes, my house does land in a separate district. But then I kind of looked at another perspective too, that as we do this districting, we're not going to get all the neighborhoods all separated into equal parts. I mean, some neighborhoods are going to be divided in some aspects. But I tried to look at a positive side of that, and that's going to benefit that neighborhood with two representatives in that aspect. So if it's somebody who understands a different portion of that neighborhood or a different sector, you know, in those kind of scenarios where a neighborhood may kind of get divided a bit, then that neighborhood is going to have two different representatives representing a particular neighborhood. So I'm not sure how that maps out, but just trying to look at a positive perspective on that too.
All right. Well, I guess we'll adjourn till our meeting on Saturday at 2:00 PM here. I do expect it to be less formal than today, but not a free-for-all either. I do appreciate the enthusiasm that you bring to support for each other's viewpoints, but hopefully, some of the comments from council tonight will help temper either positive or negative enthusiasm so we could just have a discussion and look at the pros and cons of the maps that will be on display this Saturday. And so with that in mind, we'll adjourn till our special meeting Saturday, May 6th, at 2:00 PM. Thank you.